The time is now 12:00 p.m. and I call this special meeting of the City Council of Ozark to order. We will review the order of the meeting, so after the calls are over. The agenda for this afternoon's meeting is the prayer of the pledge of allegiance. Setting the agenda. Item number four is a resolution that will canvass the vote from the municipal election held on August 26, 2025. Council members, do you have any questions about that resolution?
No.
No.
Item number five is issuing the certificates of election. Council members, do you have any questions on item number five?
No.
Then after that, we will adjourn. So at this time, I'll go out. Do we have any department heads in attendance that have any comments or questions on our two agenda items this afternoon? Do we have anyone in attendance to ask any comments or questions on our agenda items? Anyone? I guess that's it. So, all right, so with that, I will call the meeting to order. We will open with a prayer led by Councilman Peralta and I will lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, I'm thankful for this day that you made for us, Lord, and we ask you to be with all of our citizens, all of our workers here, Lord, especially the first responders. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Attention. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll set the agenda for this afternoon. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion to set the agenda as listed.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Certainly.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments on setting the agenda as presented? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is a resolution canvassing the vote from the municipal election held on August 26, 2025. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, introduce a resolution canvassing the vote from the municipal election held on August 26, 2025, and move for its adoption.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this resolution? So the discussion that I need to present is we do have provisional ballots that need to be added to our totals. So at this time, I'm going to open this. I'm assuming there were like 400 of them. There were not 400 of them. There were not.
How many were there?
Twenty-five.
There were 25. Okay. So the roster has been given to me. All right, so we have, and then I just go down and say number one, count it, number two, not count it, okay. So, okay. There we go. These are the do not count ones. Yeah.
Yep.
Yes, okay. So, number one. Oh, these are in a crazy order. Hold on. No, they're not. Yes, they are. Should I just go down this and say number? Or should we try to put them in order?
The table.
Okay. Okay, so number two. So this is in that. Number one isn't, or number one is not in there.
What did the envelope say?
Says do not count these.
These are the new kills.
So I actually have to say number one, do not count, number two, do not count. Gotcha.
And I will keep those, and then you keep the ones that we do, and you'll open those.
Okay, now these are in this order. Okay, so number one, do not count.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna keep that in that pile. Number two, count.
Okay.
Number three, count. Number four. Here first, since this is the shoulder step. Number four, count. Number five. Do not count. Number six. Do not count. Number seven. Count. Number eight. Count. Number nine, do not count. Number 10. Do not count. Number 11. Count. Count. Number twelve, count. Number 13, do not count. Number 14, count. Number 15, count. Number 16, count. Number 17, count. Number 18, do not count. That was 19.
That was 18.
Yes. Now, number 18. Eighteen is a count. Nineteen is a do not count. Number 20 is a count. Number 21, count. Number 22, count. Number 23, count. Number 24, do not count. Number 25, do not count. Okay. Okay, so now that we have our two, we have to go through and add the totals of the ones that actually need to be counted. So, starting with number two.
Can you give me a letter of order?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And then another two more. I like that everything is sealed and. What's the person who voted?
That's a way to make sure that when it happens, because in my paper that'll firm these envelopes. I don't have paper, I'm gonna use gauze.
Okay. So number two, please add vote for Mayor Charles Ward. Place one, Brian Macario. Place three, Winston Jackson. Place five, Caitlin Cummings. Do we need to keep? I'm going to place it this way. And then I'm actually going to do that as well.
Sure.
All right. Would you like me to put it back on the envelope?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, number three. Name matches. Thank you for the letter of order. Please add a vote for Mayor Charles Ray Ward. A vote for place one, Brian Macario. A vote for place three, Daniela Redding Peterman. A vote for place five, Caitlin Cummings. Number four. Name's match. Please add one vote for Mayor Charles Ward. One vote for place one, Leah Harlow. One vote for place three, Winston T. Jackson. One vote for place five, Stanley Infinger. Number seven. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. One vote for Leah Harlow. One vote for Winston T. Jackson. One vote for Caitlin Cummings. Number eight. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. One vote for Leah Harlow. One vote for Winston T. Jackson. One vote for Stanley Infinger. Number 11. Name's match. Please add one vote for Mark Blankenship. Leah Harlow. Daniela Redding Peterman. Stanley Infinger. Number 12. Please add one vote for Mark Blankenship. One vote for Leah Harlow. Daniela Redding Peterman. And Stanley Infinger. Number 14. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. One for Brian Macario. One for Daniela Redding Peterman. One for Stanley Infinger. Number 15. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. One for Brian Macario. Winston T. Jackson. Caitlin Cummings. Number 16. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. Brian Macario. Winston Jackson. Caitlin Cummings. Number 17. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. Brian Macario. Winston T. Jackson. Caitlin Cummings. Number 18. Please add one vote for Mark Blankenship. Leah Harlow. Winston T. Jackson. Stanley Infinger. Number 20. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. Brian Macario. Daniela Redding Peterman. Caitlin Cummings. Number 21. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. Brian Macario. Daniela Redding Peterman. Caitlin Cummings. Number 22. Please add Charles Ray Ward. Leah Harlow. Winston Jackson. Stanley Infinger. Last one. Number 23. Please add one vote for Charles Ray Ward. And that's all that was marked on that one. So I will now ask that you please present us with updated totals.
Here are the updated totals. Mark Blankenship received a total of 942. Charles Ray Ward received a total of 2,085. For a total of 3,027 cask ballots for mayor. City Council Place One, Leah Harlow, received a total of 1,347. Brian Macario received a total of 1,616. For a total of 2,0963 for City Council Place One. City Council Place Three, Winston T. Jackson, received a total of 1,900. Daniela Redding Peterman received a total of 1,083. For a combined total of 2,983. City Council Place Five, Caitlin Cummings, received a total of 1,512. Stanley Infinger received a total of 1,455. For a total of 2,967 for City Council Place Five.
Thank you. So with that, that actually is the remaining bit of discussion on the resolution. So with that, we have a motion on the floor and a second. So all in favor of passing the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five is to issue the certificates of election. What are the wishes of the council?
Madam President, I make a motion that we issue the certificate of election if the first is elected.
Okay. Can you, will you say all those names?
For Charles Ward, Mayor, for Brian Macario, Council Place One. For Winston T. Jackson, Council Place Three. And Caitlin Cummings, Council Place Five.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Sit.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on issuing these certificates? All in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, with that, uh, that concludes our business for this afternoon. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I'm adjourned.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, or do we have any discussion on adjouring? All in favor of adjouring, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Call this meeting to a close.